Hey Annie.
Good for us.
That's the main thing, it has protein. Now these are ours too, y'all don't let me forget my poinsettia. I put my water up every second.
Okay, it's a little bit after six o'clock, so let's call the meeting to order. This is a City of Canton Council meeting, December the sixth, 2018. If you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson, will you give the invocation, please?
Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight to do the business of the City of Canton, we ask your guidance for wisdom and we ask your help for those who need help in our city. Help open our eyes to those needs so that we don't have people who are hungry and homeless at any time, and particularly not during this Christmas time. We thank you for continuing to bless the city and to bless our leaders. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, first item of business is public hearing. Mr. Patton is here, you want to?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is something that comes before City Council every year. This is our annual update to our five-year short-term work plan and capital improvements element. This is involved with our current comp plan and not the comp plan or CIE that is going to be discussed later on. This is a requirement because of the state of Georgia and the City of Canton's impact fee laws.
Of our current comp plan, not the one, not the 2040?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have anyone who would like to speak regarding that update? The capital improvements element of our five-year short-term work plan for our impact fee program? Anyone? Okay. If not, we'll close that portion of the public hearing. Now, do we need to, do we need to act or anything on that at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, okay. All right, I'd like to welcome all of our guests and visitors tonight and entertain a motion to consider the approval of the agenda. As, I have nothing additional to add or change to the agenda if anyone has.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay. Mr. Yellen made the motion, Ms. Wilson seconded the motion to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose no. All members voting for the motion? You have in your agenda package the council meeting draft minutes from November the fifteenth, 2018? Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Yellen made the motion, Ms. McGrew seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All members voting for the motion with the exception of Mr. Estes abstaining since he was not here at that meeting. There's four ayes and one abstention. Okay. You also have in your agenda package the financials for the month of October. Our CFO, Nathan Ingram, is here to answer any questions there are any, are there any comments or questions regarding the financials for October? Okay, this is for informational purposes only and does not need any approval at this time. Our ten-minute public input period, Mr. Weaver?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver, I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road. I don't want to be concerning, and I certainly hate to talk trash, and I don't want to be sent home cold as we near Christmas, but advanced disposal is failing us on our little side road there. We went a full month and we had late service every single week. Our pickup dates are on Wednesdays, and on some weeks we didn't even get picked up at all, and I believe even on the week of Thanksgiving, we didn't receive any service. Fortunately, I was able to reach out to your chief financial officer, Nathan Ingram, and I was able to communicate and liaise with his office, and he was able to handle my concern. However, he did field three complaints from myself, one of which was in person, and I even came on my mother's request on one of those complaints. We're certainly not angry, and we know that your, that advanced disposal is a new vendor, but we would hope that the city can work with its vendor for trash pickup service so that this doesn't continue through Christmas. On a lighter note, I am currently looking forward to being able to use the new sidewalk installation that leads down Brown Industrial Parkway to Edelwild Park, and I look forward to the park extension running northwardly to the, to the train trestle there. I'm really looking forward to that, and I would ask that you continue to add the sidewalk and trail renovations to your park system moving forward under the long-term plan that you have for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Okay. Under old, old business, under new business, a discussion, the resolution to transmit the annual update of capital improvements element and five-year short-term work plan for Canton's impact fee program?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is what we just had at the public hearing. This is in regards to our Canton 2030 or Horizon 2030 comprehensive plan capital improvements element. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to the annual update.
Anyone have any questions? We've been over this a few times, so, okay. All righty, and then this will, now this will be moved, moved along to the twentieth?
Yes, sir, it will be on the next council agenda for a discussion and potential action on the resolution to transmit.
On December the twentieth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. All right. Item B, discussion of Canton 2040 comprehensive plan, ten-year update. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, I'm going to let Brittany Anderson come up and go over the amendments, adjustments that were discussed at the called City Council's work session last week. I believe those were emailed out to you earlier today, and you have a paper copy of the pages that were involved with all of the amendments as discussed last week.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, like Mr. Patton said, since the special call work session was held last week, I have made revisions to the draft comp plan update. The changes includes items that were discussed in the meeting last week as well as items discussed with the city manager. The document that you have before you is not the full draft document. Instead, it consists only of the pages where revisions were made, and those revisions are highlighted. If you would like, I can go over those items, item by item, or I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
I, I don't know if anyone would like for her to go over these item by item. I have been through them this afternoon, I got this this afternoon, I guess, and I've been through them, and I'm satisfied with, you know, I had a bunch of questions, but I'm very satisfied with, with what's been changed here and clarified.
I just have one point. I don't want to be too snarky, but I still struggle with 2016 population. That should be an actual, yet they're not the same number, the straight-line method or even the Ross and Associate numbers, it should just be twenty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-eight people, which is how many people we had in Canton, right?
Are you referring to the population?
I'm sorry, I'm on table two-two.
Okay.
So it just, it just shouldn't be an estimate or anything, it should be just the actual, right?
Well, I don't know if we have any actual counts until the census, is that, is that correct?
It's based on the census?
That is correct. The population numbers are always official based upon US Census 2010. The one portion of the table, the staff prepared and utilized straight-line method for the projections from the 2010 numbers. Ross and Associates used various other methods other than straight lines such as S curve and all come up with their estimates of the population based upon American community survey estimates from 2015 and then the official numbers from 2010.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Anyone else have a question? You're lucky tonight. Not many questions at all. Thank you, good job on this, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next item is the discussion of the Canton capital improvements element of 2040 comprehensive plan.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, this was another document that was discussed at the called work session meeting last week. Bill Ross and Paige Hatler, the consultants working with city staff, were here. I'm here to answer any questions in regards to this.
Anyone have any questions on that? That, that is attachment on eleven C. Find that in there. C. Actually, what we have in here is just, let me see. We have the entire thing, or we just, we just got the resolution?
You just, you just have the cover page, because that's one of those documents we printed for you last week that you didn't have any questions?
Yeah, oh, okay.
And so we didn't want to kill any more trees.
So nobody has any questions on that, you're welcome, right?
But if, but if you do go online, the attachment is fully there for the document.
Yeah, we've been through it enough, I think, anyway.
We will have an updated full capital improvements element, part of the package that goes out for council in two weeks that will reflect the December twentieth date.
Okay.
And any minor changes that we have discovered, typos, things of that nature. Same with the comprehensive plan, we'll have a full, new, updated version of that for the December twentieth meeting.
Okay, so, so if anyone has not actually reviewed that as much as they would like, then they can look at it between now and two weeks from now and, and then answer, ask any questions they have at that point before.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Item D, discussion of case AX 1801-001 requested by Perlis Nice LLC to annex forty-two-point-zero-seven acres located at two, twenty-two forty-one, twenty-two forty-three, twenty-two forty-seven, and twenty-two forty-nine coming highway. Now, this is the shopping center just on north side of Highway twenty across from Canton Marketplace, right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Council members did table this annexation request as the, as well as the next item, the zoning of this property back in the spring, and it was tabled until December. It's December, so we're back for a council consideration discussions relative to the annexation and zoning of this property.
Well, I'm not usually real, real big on annexations, this one probably makes sense for us. And the only, the only thing of consideration from my standpoint is the economics of it, and I believe that they are getting a, a break in their TAP fees for, as part of the annexation agreement, but in return over a period of three years, we will more than recoup that amount, I believe, in, in property tax. And then, of course, there's going to be a lot of other benefits as well, I think, too. And it only really makes sense to me that when we have city services on one side of the road like that, you know, it makes sense as far as from a efficiency of service to, to serve that as well with our police protection and other, other services, so. Anybody have any question on that?
I had one question.
Yes.
I seem to remember one of the reasons we tabled it was they were, had already pulled permits and everything from the county and were getting inspections through the county. Has that entire process been done from?
Now, there's going to be a few outstanding issues in there, but our building inspector, Mr. Crosby, has been working with County Mr. Laney, and they've basically come to an agreement where the county's going to continue anything that they have an open permit on, and we will permit anything moving forward.
I knew that was just, that was the big open item.
And there's not as much of that left. Most of what they have that they're currently working on is going to be tenant finish, and so it's a little bit different.
There's one of our parcel buildings that I think has four or five suites that's going to continue through the county with tenant finish in conjunction with the city.
Anyone else have a question on that? And the next item, of course, would just go along with item D, it is the rezoning once it's, you know, once it's annexed, it would need to be rezoned general commercial.
Sixteen-point-five-two acres was recommended by Planning Commission as R forty zoning, which is what happened when all of this went through the process at the county. Twenty-five-point-five-five acres is proposed to be GC general commercial zone.
So the Planning Commission recommended some of that remain as residential?
Correct. That is the area closest to Brook Park subdivision. It's where a lot of the revegetation plantings have been installed by the developer.
Well, so what, what would be wrong with zoning it commercial anyway? If, if it's very, very likely to remain, you know, in trees and vegetation, would there be a, I mean, do they have plans to build any kind of residential development there, I guess, be my question, that you know of?
Not that I'm aware of, sir. Generally, that R forty provides a kind of a transition from the more intensive general commercial to the R, and I think it's R eighty zoning of Brook Park subdivision. It just makes for a transition, if you will, from general commercial to what the county property's owned.
What is the buffer requirement between this property and Brook Park?
City, the buffer between city and county properties are fifty feet undisturbed. This sixteen acres would constitute a good bit more than that.
If, if it was on general commercial, it would still be fifty feet buffer, is that right?
Correct.
Because of city and the county. Okay, okay. Anyone else have a question?
Well, part of it's for detention pond, right?
Part of the detention pond is within that R forty portion as well as the substantial trees that were replanted, part of the overall project and process.
Kind of wondering if we couldn't maybe ask that that section remain as, as an undisturbed buffer area?
You could certainly make that a condition once a decision is made relative to what's out there on the ground. Like I said, there is a detention pond within that sixteen acres.
Okay. Next up. This is a discussion of the Planning Commission recommendation for case MP 1810-001 for TPA Group LLC to amend the master plan for the bluffs to approve townhomes in Pod B. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing in regards to this master plan amendment in which the applicant, TPA Group, requested the amendment to allow for townhomes to be developed on a portion of one of the pods that had been previously approved for single-family detached. Planning Commission did recommend approval of the master plan approval, or master plan amendment.
Right. Any question on that? Ms. McGrew?
Do we know what the price point of these units will be?
I do not recall off the top of my head. Their attorney might could answer that question.
Thank you.
Expected price point began low twos.
Low twos.
Yeah.
And can you tell me, will they be one, two, three bedroom?
We don't have the exact layout, and it will be somewhat market deliver, market-driven, but two and three bedroom is, is anticipated.
What about buffers?
We, this will be a pod to its south, and it will have a amenity package that relates to this development, so we won't, we won't, we will naturally have a buffer from other uses within the development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. And the item G is the, would be the approval of the conditional use permit?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor, that is case CUP 1810-001. It is conditional use permit approval relative to the same acreage as the previous master plan. This is for fee simple townhomes to be developed instead of single-family detached.
And that's just over a hundred, right? Something like that?
Yes, sir, best to my recollection.
Okay. Okay, any, any other questions on that, Ms. McGrew?
How many acres is this pod?
It's a portion of that total pod, and I want, it's about sixteen acres, something like that. Somewhere around sixteen or seventeen acres. I'll get the specific acreage and provide that information back to council.
So, so within the pod, there will be single-family as well, right?
There's more that's closer to the reservoir that will be to the west of this that would most likely be single-family.
So would it be, do you know if it's the plan to build the townhomes first or last?
That was not expounded upon. I suspect that the townhomes probably are going to be built first because this portion of that pod was involved in a foreclosure, and streets are already in, all the infrastructures in place and way of water sewer lines. There's some amendments and changes that'll have to be made, but staff would estimate that that probably will be built before the single-family, which is to the west of this, because infrastructure is already in place, whereas the single-family detached portion will require installation, grading for streets, and all of the utilities and infrastructure.
Okay. Mr. Pepper?
I was just going to say there could be a fire station next door to it also. That's the sliver between that pod and the school district building is the fire station lot.
We haven't concluded that yet, right?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on that? Okay, thank you. All right, item H, discussion of Planning Commission's recommendation to amend UDC Chapter 105 to add to public hearing for the City Council meeting?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, City Council did instruct staff to move forward with this amendment to the Unified Development Code. It was advertised, Canton Planning Commission held a public hearing on November the nineteenth, and they have recommended approval of this text amendment.
And if, if approved on the twentieth, when, when will this be effective?
Basically, it will become effective on December the twentieth or twenty-first when all signatures are on ordinance. Staff is already moving forward with our planning relative to items in January relative to any additional public hearings.
Okay, so, so the Planning Commission is, is recommending this to be done, right?
That is correct.
And we will act on it on the twentieth?
Correct.
So I guess it will be anything that come up in, in January?
Anything filed after the twentieth.
Anything filed after the twentieth, oh, okay, good. Anyone have any questions?
If signatures came through, you tend to, you could veto it.
Probably won't be till this one.
Anything filed after the effective date.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Okay. All right, let's see, what else we got here? Discussion of proposed impact fee budget amendment? Use of impact fees for the new police department fence.
Yes, sir, as we are working on transitioning the police department from their existing office to 151 Elizabeth Street, one of the projects that they have asked for is to have a portion of that parking lot fenced in so that they've got a controlled area, and we think we can pull that out of the impact fees and, and use that since it's a long-term project and that that would be good use of those funds since they're earmarked for public safety. And so, instead of utilizing general government building splosh funds, the impact fee fund in this case is more restrictive, and so we would use the most restrictive fund first on that portion of the project.
Now, are these shown in the budget as contingent funds in the impact fee fund?
These are funds that have already been accumulated, and we didn't have an expense.
But not budgeted?
Not budgeted for expense this year, correct.
Okay, okay. Anyone have any questions on that? Sound like a good use of those funds. Okay, discussion of the Atkins change order on the State Route twenty utility relocation project.
We talked a little bit about this last month, if you recall, as DOT is working to make some corrections on State Route twenty from the interstate to the county line on the Forsyth side. They are going to pay to relocate all of our infrastructure in the city. We only have to pay for the engineering side of that relocation. And our engineers have been working with GDOT, we submit information, GDOT makes some changes, we have to submit, you know, changed information. So Atkins has come back and said, you know, they're seeking a change order, I believe it's in about, the amount of about sixteen thousand dollars. a change order. I believe it's in about, the amount of about sixteen thousand dollars based on additional work that they are doing on those plans. Seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
How mu, I'm sorry, tell me again, the amount?
Seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
The only, the only thing that bothers me about that is I'm assuming that the engineering firm is working with the DOT.
They are.
The DOT told them what they needed to do, I'm assuming. They did what DOT told them to do.
Correct.
DOT then says, no, we think we're going to do it another way. And now we're stuck with the cost of doing it the other way, even though we had no control over, you know, the direction there. But, you know, that's the way, and I assume that's accurate, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. They ought to be paying for that really, but, you know.
Well, the water authority is having to pay for both their engineering and their relocation. So we're in a little bit of a better spot, but we are kind of being yanked around a little bit.
There's no doubt we're in a better spot than the water authority there. No doubt. Mr. Goodman?
Mr. Pepper, do you have any idea when they actually will start on this? I have a million people asking that all the time.
You know, I think the last meeting I was in, the project was eligible to be let in state budget fiscal year nineteen. So that means that that budget would have started in July of this year. So they could release it anytime through June of next year. And that's just, that's just, you know, on the bidding of it. That's not the actual work.
Have you given you know, actual physical starting on the road yet?
Sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, moving around a little. Discussion of the award of sanitary sewer rehabilitation project to KAM contract in southeast in the amount of two million eight eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
If you'll recall, we did an I and I study and they identified several million dollars worth of projects that were rated from one to five, five being the most, the projects that needed to be done the fastest, the most dire projects, down to one which were minor projects that might improve inflow and infiltration into the system. We went back with Brown and Caldwell, who did that study, and said, prepare us a document that takes care of our four and five projects. Those are the ones that seem to be the most needed and will have the biggest impact as it relates to that water entering into our sewer system. They did so. We put that out to bid. CAM, CAM was the low bidder on it at two point eight million. If you recall, we have in the past placed money from stormwater into reserve to help fund these projects from the stormwater side. It's about eight hundred thousand dollars. And so the other two million dollars would come out of the water and sewer fund as a sewer project. It's likely going to take many months to get it done. And basically what we're do, doing is agreeing to the contract, but the ability, agreeing to award it with the ability to, to then phase those sections of the project over time, based on when we can get into those particular areas. Most of this, of course, is downtown. So we'll have to be very, you know, sensitive to the time and place of that work.
Mr. Justice?
Any, just looking at the bids, you know, the good news is the one we've chosen or recommended to choose is the lowest and then closest to the engineer's estimate. Is there anything that, just looking at the number two and number three, that they're so far off? Is there other things that they did not, that CAM did not, or KAM did not?
No, I mean, I, I couldn't really speak to that. Mr. Hatabian would be the better answer on that. I will say that we have worked with CAM before. CAM did the old Ball Ground Sewer Project, which is under budget. They've done a portion of the second entrance at Laurel Canyon. So they've done work in the area and, and prior work with them, they seem to be right on target as it relates to price.
Those two get what they're job.
Yeah, clearly. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Discussion on the award of the task order contract to Black and Beach.
If you recall, Black and Beach has just finished up our water wastewater master plan. Mr. Hatabian, whom I'm covering for tonight, he's rehabbing from a little surgery, had asked me last month if I would consider proposing to council that we provide a task order style agreement with Black and Beach that we have with Atkins, Brown and Caldwell. As they understand the water wastewater master plan and we've got needs for pump station and tank, water tank placement up in Laurel Canyon, we could go ahead and kickstart them on the project based on their knowledge of the project. So what you have before you is a task order, contract, agreement that allows us to provide them with a task. There's a set rate in here, similar to what we have with Atkins and Brown and Caldwell. I'm happy to answer any questions or, Mr. Simpson is here from Black and Beach, he may be able to answer some questions as well, or, or we can get those questions to Mr. Hatabian.
Anybody have any questions? Ms. McGee?
Thank you. Would the projects have a maximum a dollar amount before we would send something out to bids?
So we would bring specific task orders to council and it would have an estimated amount of labor for them to go out and do that design.
Would we be setting a, a maximum amount for you to go ahead and do a project without coming to us?
Most, no. Most of the time what we do is do a not to exceed on a task order.
And then would we have the freedom then to receive, to put out requests for bids? Or are we completely locked in to use them?
They'll only be doing the design side. So we would be going out to bid for the actual construction and all of that. Yes, ma'am.
But we would not be bidding out necessarily the design work.
Correct.
I don't, personally, I don't know why we wouldn't bid it out, but go ahead.
Traditionally, what, traditionally what we've done with the task orders is we've kept those task orders under a hundred thousand. I can't think of one since I've been here that's been even maybe above sixty. Most of them have been smaller projects that are a little bit harder to get response on and end up taking a bunch of time to get those responses. But again, we have, this would give us three engineering firms that we have task orders with. We could always get estimates from all three of those.
Anyone else? All right, discussion of the CCMWA. Cobb County Marietta Water Authority requests to amend joint project agreement to Hickory Law Reservoir.
All right, this one's going to be a fun one.
Yeah.
And I'm not gonna, I'm not going to pretend to know all the answers on it. So we'll start with that. As you know, we co-own the reservoir with Cobb County Marietta Water Authority. We have twenty-five percent, they have seventy-five percent. Since I started here, Mr. Page, who manages the Marietta Water Authority, Cobb County Marietta Water Authority, has asked for us to consider an amendment to our joint project agreement, which basically changes the way we allocate the capacity of the water that's held in the reservoir. What they have proposed is an allocation that's based off of that true seventy-five, twenty-five split. So they estimate the volume of water at full pool of the reservoir and they estimate what that would equate to in acres or gallons for the city's twenty-five percent and for the authorities' seventy-five percent. If the city were to release water, the percentage of what is in the reservoir doesn't stay at twenty-five percent and seventy-five percent because you've released water out. So you've got less volume. So our twenty-five percent may shrink a little bit because we've released water and their maximum may go up a little bit because of what's left in there. So the idea is that it's a more accurate depiction of what the capacity is within the, the storage of the reservoir. It is a very cumbersome formula that we have to go through, but it does provide some protection so that, you know, one party can't just continue to drain water out of the rev, out of the reservoir and have a negative impact on the other party. Likewise, if, for instance, we did a release, we would pay any cost associated with the release. We would also pay any cost associated with pumping to recoup those waters back into the reservoir. If the waters flowed into the reservoir from rain, for instance, stormwater runoff, we wouldn't pay any cost associated with that. If we were to go through a drought period and we had evaporation of water on the reservoir, it would impact both organizations from that loss of total water. And so as the water level goes down, it's still seventy-five, twenty-five, but the capacity that's there has also gone down. Where this really came to a head is the city's in the process of renewing its withdrawal permits from the Etowah River. The withdrawal permits include our ability to withdraw based on releases of water from the reservoir into the river. When those permits were originally set up, they did not include the name of Cobb County Marietta Water Authority. They only included the name of the city of Canton. My understanding is the reason why they did not include Cobb County Marietta Water Authority was at the time that those permits were put in place, that water authority was in litigation along with the state of Georgia against the state of Alabama over water wars. Now that it seems like that isn't an issue anymore, Cobb County decided to meet with DNR and, and requested that they not move forward with our permit unless it was clarified that the withdrawal based on the reservoir included Cobb County Marietta Water Authority since they're co-own reservoir. So we were given an extension to work out some type of agreement. At a board of managers meeting in October, the end of October, Mr. Page asked me if I would bring forward to the mayor and council some ideas for amending that agreement. I explained to him that I would not do that, that he should go back to his board and have his board agree to what they want, put it in the form of a letter and send it as a request for an amendment to the mayor and council, which is what you have before you. What you'll see behind that request are some additional notations that Mr. Hatabian has made in the agreement of things that he suggests if we're going to do an amendment should be amended at the same time. For instance, there's references in there to former city attorneys that don't exist anymore. There's references to individuals in there by name that should be cleared up. There's some address changes that should be cleared up. The one main sticking point that Mr. Hatabian has on that particular agreement is there is a clause in there that provides a first right or refusal to Cobb County Marietta Water Authority should the city of Canton decide to operate a water plant off of the reservoir. So if we were to use the reservoir as our, as our raw water source for a plant, then we would have to provide Cobb County Marietta Water Authority with a hundred and eighty day period with which they could decide first right or refusal to participate in that plant, both the debt and any potential revenue off the plant. You know, there's probably pros and cons with that. So I can't really speak, you know, about how I would proceed with that. I will tell you this, though. As it relates to this agreement, it's a very old agreement. There probably are some things that need to be better formulated in here. But I also think we need to take our time and get it done correctly as opposed to try to react to their request so that we can meet a deadline with the state on a permit. DNR has basically said if we can't reach an agreement before a period of time, that the permit will revert back to the old permit, which just has the city of Canton on it. So having said that, I did explain to Mr. Page that while we're talking about the joint project agreement, we may also want to have some discussions as it relates to the reservoir management plan, which is a document that basically outlines things like recreation on the reservoir. If we're going to open up one, we ought to open up both and have a, have a lengthier discussion about what benefits our residents actually get from that reservoir and how we plan to use it. So what we had determined at the board of managers meeting in November, based on receiving his letter, I told Mr. Page that we would have this on the council's work session agenda. I also told him that there will not be any action on it tonight and that based off of direction from council, I will reach back out to EPD and request extending our deadline on the water permit to March thirty-first based on the fact that both parties are working through these agreements. I don't see any issues from DNR on that. But I did want to bring it to you, let you know what the thought process is there and that we probably need to do some homework on it. I don't know if it's one of those things where the mayor wants to appoint a committee to sit down and, and, and make some reviews and have discussions on it. If you want us to do a special work session to do it, it's, it's our largest debt that the city has. So it's very important, whatever we do, we're very thoughtful about it. But at the same time, you know, it is in our backyard and it's not in their backyard. So we need to be thoughtful about that, too.
We had a withdrawal permit before we had the reservoir.
That's correct.
And it was in the name of the city of Canton, I believe. I'm not sure I would want another entity on the name of our water withdrawal permit, which then would certainly give DNR the option of saying, well, y'all are joint owners of this. So they've got as much decision-making capacity in our permit and, and maybe even the operation of our plant as we would. And that would, that would concern me there.
There's actually two, there's two withdrawal rates. One rate is if we're withdrawing just from the river. And one rate is if we're withdrawing from the river that is being aided by the reservoir. And my understanding from Cobb County is they only want to be listed on that second one, which is where we would be releasing from the reservoir into the actual river. Does that make sense?
Even though we're discharging our water from the reservoir?
Correct.
Now.
I mean, to, to me, the, the flip side of it is we benefit when Cherokee County releases water from Latham. So should we include them on that permit as well? Because we're benefiting from their, you know, release. So, I mean, there's a whole lot of thought process in that and, and how it actually works. And, you know, we've looked at it from the staff level on the accounting. We don't necessarily have any issue with that. It's probably, it's probably a better record-keeping formula for knowing what's in the reservoir and who has what. There's a lot of work associated with it. But, you know, this is a hundred billion dollar project. So if we're going to open it up for this one amendment, we really need to think about how it impacts the whole thing.
Now, right now, you know, right now, it, it seemed to me that it was, it was as fair as you could do to say, okay, can, you got twenty-five percent, Cobb County, seventy-five percent. Of whatever's in that reservoir, you got twenty, we got twenty-five percent of it. According to this proposal here, there's something like fifteen point, fifteen thousand something acre feet of, of, of water, water in there. And that, so that Cobb is entitled to eleven thousand something acre feet and we're entitled to three thousand something, I guess. What would happen if during an extended period of drought, my guess is could, could Cobb not take most of that water out? Their eleven thousand, let's say there's only ten thousand in there. Could they take their eleven? Well, if they take eleven, they could take ten out.
They could, they could only take their seventy-five percent of whatever's in They could, they could only take their seventy-five percent of whatever's in there. So it's basically, based on the, based on the level of the reservoir, that calculation changes. The acreage of water changes.
This is gonna take some soaking in, you know?
Uh, it's gonna, a lot of math involved.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions about that? I think we need to think about that one a little bit and and maybe, maybe have a a work session on that before we do anything that we might regret at a later date.
And and I explained to Mr. Page that I thought the council would be open if we wanted to have a joint work session and hear from them what it is they're concerned with and, you know, that that might be fine, too, you know? But but we can definitely set something like that up.
Has has, I assume that his board has indicated their support for that, or has he said?
Yes, this letter was based off of their board's support.
Okay. Anyone else have anything on that? Okay. Discussion of adopting a resolution to accept the terms and conditions of the contract for the state grant and the amount of a hundred thousand to construct a concrete trail within Etowah River Park.
If you recall, we applied for and received a land and water conservation fund grant through the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. It's federal funding, and so this is their requirement for us to accept these conditions before we accept the grant. This portion of the grant is associated with the portion of the trail that's on the section on the east side of five seventy-five behind Governor's Walk and at the end of...
So when the grant was applied applied for, that's the section it was applied for?
It was applied for that, and it was actually applied for the last portion of that trail, um, so that we would have time to get to that part, um, before we had to meet all of the conditions of the...
You said it's on that portion on the east side of five seventy-five?
Yes.
The undeveloped part?
It's on the portion that Hayes James is working on.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Does the city have to, does the city have to put up any funds in order to receive the hundred thousand?
Yes, there was a match on this, um, and I can't remember right off the top of my head what it was. I don't think it was a dollar-for-dollar match because we're also allowed to utilize labor.
So we have no problem with a match?
No. Our match would either come from impact fees or from parts and recreations lost.
Okay. Anyone else? Discussion of requests for extended work hours by Canton Mill Ventures LLC and Reformation Brewery, one forty-one Railroad Street?
Yes, sir. In having a conversation with, uh, Mr. Hodge and his project down there, Mr. Schmilke, uh, they had asked if, um, as Reformation Brewery's ready to move in, they're gonna be moving some of their equipment at odd hours based on the size of the of the equi- of equipment that needs to be moved in. And so they had asked about the working hours, and I told them that, you know, traditionally, these are what our work hours are and that if they are gonna need outside working hours, then they should apply for those extended hours. Um, we looked at the location of where the project is. There's only three houses that would be impacted from a distance standpoint that, under our regulations, and those three houses are on Railroad Street. Um, and, uh, it's not expected to be a a daily routine, it's, or even a weekly routine. It's really only gonna be as that specialized equipment is moved in by truck. Um, you know, we already have a railroad that runs through the middle of there that runs on odd hours anyway, so, um, I told them I didn't think it would be an issue, but I'd be happy to bring it before the council, uh, for you to consider.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I can't see it not an issue. The, uh, well, question I would add, it brings, it brings to mind, uh, when we were dealing with the, uh, Don Hosfeld most recently on that. I seem to recall that we talked about at least, you know, they had to notify the people and, but it was sort of after they got approval, I believe.
Correct.
It doesn't seem to make sense to notify them after the approval as opposed to before the approval and and then, you know, get that we would get some feedback from that. Did we, did we change anything on that yet?
We did not, but if you would like, I can ask them to send letters certified to those three homeowners, Railroad Street, and let them know that this could be on the agenda for December twentieth, if they have any concerns, they can either reach out to the city manager or...
I, I think we probably need to ultimately get some kind of, uh, ordinance and specifics that says, do you, do you notify just the residential property owners or do you notify all property owners within a certain distance of that, uh, project? I mean, that, I, I, I just think probably notifying them after the fact is probably not a good thing, but I don't see this one as a problem, but it just...
Well, and the interesting thing about this is if they had, if they had parceled off the the brewery from the rest of the project, which is where the work will be going on, they're the only adjacent property owner to it within the five hundred feet. It's because it's all part of one parcel that, you know, it gets close to those homes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, anyone else? Discussion of the twenty nineteen council meeting dates?
If you'll flip to the, uh, to that page, we've noted that in July, July fourth is the first Thursday. I don't assume anybody wants to have a council meeting unless maybe, maybe we want to dress up, you know, like, like the old Federalist people. But, um, I guess what we could consider is moving that from the fourth to the eleventh and having a ca- a work session on the eleventh and a council meeting on the eighteenth. The reason why we need to know this is we need to be able to get the schedule together for those public hearings as it relates to those zoning matters ahead of time so that all of that's been adopted at the beginning of the year and when a project comes in, they know what the dates are.
You know what we could do? That, uh, that pushes that pretty quick, one week ahead, it it might. Yeah, that's about the best you could do, isn't it?
You could do the eleventh and the twenty-fifth and then have a work session on the first of August. Because it would be new...
The eleventh is about the best you could do, I think.
Yeah. So would you want to do the eleventh and the twenty-fifth and keep the week in between?
Yeah. If there's anything that is discussed at the work session, we could...
Have a little time?
Yeah.
We can do that.
So July eighteenth will stay?
No, we would move the work session from the fourth to the eleventh and the meeting from the eighteenth to the twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay.
And then everything else on the calendar would stay.
Okay. All right, next item? Leave Mr... Discussion on publicly introduced agenda items. Before, before we, uh, begin that, uh, Mr. Weaver had had sent me a request to be able to speak on that particular item. And normally what happens when it's not on the agenda like that for a member, uh, someone in attendance to speak is the council has to approve that. So I would entertain a motion to allow Mr., uh, Weaver to speak for two or three minutes or whatever, uh, on that issue. Have a motion, uh, Ms. McGrew made the motion, uh, Mr. Yawn seconded the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Weaver? Well, I, it's, it would appear to me that it might be for us to hear your information before we discuss it, but I guess we could do that anyway.
Really, all I was gonna say is that from a historical standpoint...
Yeah.
When Ms. Stewart was putting together the policy guide, this was a policy that she found. We haven't found an adopted date or anything like that. That's why it was included in the list, but if you note the list, there's not an adopted date. So the question is, in, in the actual code, it talks about a period of time for a resident to be able to, uh, request to be on the agenda. That policy that we don't have the adopted date on gives a different date. So the question is, we just need direction from council as to what you want that time period to be.
What does charter say? That, that would, that's why it will take precedence.
The char- the charter doesn't address that about public participation, but there, but there's an ordinance which would control over any policy anyway.
And the, the code calls for five business days. I am assuming that the reason why it changed is that at some point when the city went to its agenda system, they started delivering the agenda packets on the Friday before the council meetings. So it would be very difficult to generate the agenda packet for Thursday if you didn't have all the requests in until Friday. And so maybe that's why the time was placed in there, you know? I don't think the public really cares what the time period is, they just want to know what it, you know?
Do you think, do you think a week is adequate or is it gonna be ten days or what, what, what works with our process now?
What we try to do now is we try to have all agenda items, so for, for tonight's meeting, we try to have all departments turn in their agenda items to the clerk's office by noon at Tuesday the week before. The clerk then prepares an agenda and has that draft agenda reviewed by the city manager and the mayor on Wednesday, and then the draft agenda sent out to council so that you know what's coming out on the agenda in case you need a council-introduced item or what have you. Those packets are then prepared on Thursday and delivered on Friday. So if we had, um, if we had seven business days, we'd probably be okay. Um, if you want to say ten business days, that's fine, too. We just need the ability to know that if the public has something they want on the agenda and they have attachments to go with it, it's a little bit more cumbersome process than just typing in something at the last minute, so to speak.
So ten calendar days would be fine?
Or business days.
Or what?
Business days.
And I was, well, either one, but I, I think most time, if you tell people, they call in, "Monday, I gotta get on," you say ten days ahead of the meeting. I don't know if there'd be more thinking in terms of days or business days.
Well, nobody would be here to take their call on Saturday or Sunday.
No, but, uh, the meeting is on Thursday, right? So ten days before that is not gonna be a weekend, I don't think.
Monday, right. It'd be the Monday before.
It'd be the Monday before, which would be...
You mean from Thursday, uh, I see.
So...
You should be all the way back to Monday, wouldn't be Monday, would it?
You had a meeting on the twenty-fifth, it'd be the fifteenth, which would be, yeah, Monday.
So it'd be a weekday, yeah. But I mean, it didn't matter to me which way, I just think it'd make it clear.
Ultimately, ultimately, we'll do whatever you want. We just need to know so that the clerk's office knows what to tell the citizens, and we need to know what the last available date is before we need to prepare those agenda packets.
Okay. Mr. Weaver?
Off of the floor to the, can Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for voting to allow me to speak on second occasion. Indeed, earlier this week, I hand-delivered a memorandum up front, and she put it in the mayor's mailbox for me, my request under section two dash ninety-one subsection C of your ordinances, uh, which is, allows you to grant this opportunity to someone whose desires to speak on an agenda item. Thank you. Um, if, as each of you may recall, as Mr. Peppers teed up, uh, back in November, and I think in maybe late October before Ms. Stewart's departure, um, she actually had that as an agenda item, creating a one-stop shop, if you will, of all the different policies that you've created internally for yourselves and also for the city's personnel. And these things are things that certainly are open records, open meetings compliant, but would not normally be available to the citizenry if you're not an employee or if you're not someone who has been elected to council. And I noticed a discrepancy under page three of the council's policy and procedures manual under agenda subsection A where you mandate a fourteen-day notice, whereas the ordinance that I normally move under to justify the items that I request the city to place on its agenda meetings for both the work session and for the formal business meetings is a five-day rule. So the discrepancy there, it'd be my hope that this council could move at the most opportune time to clarify the policy manual that you promulgate for yourselves internally. Again, something that normally the citizens would not see, although they could if they knew to ask for it. But your policy and procedures manual that you have for yourselves internally creates that fourteen-day benchmark, and I'm certainly happy, since I use it often, to obey whatever you choose, whichever number you choose to put there, whether it be a calendar day, a business day requirement, et cetera, what have you, or based on the city attorney's remarks. It's just for me and my attempts to adhere to the ordinances and also the policies that you create, it creates a discrepancy for me as to have I, have I placed my remarks in time? Is it timely, is it not timely? When I'm following an ordinance that says five days, whereas the policy I discovered through review of the documents on the hyperlink of the Legisstar website where you have the fourteen-day rule, that discrepancy was burdensome. It would be my hope that you would choose to amend the procedures manual to just do the five-day rule because as the term, as the, as Mr. Dyer remarked, the ordinance would supersede the policy in the charter, most assuredly the ordinance. That's the way it goes. But again, it's just my, it's my desire. And, uh, also, earlier in the meeting under item eleven H, you actually moved to, on first reading, approved the initial, initially the UDC, uh, change for public input, and since you were moving to allow more transparency and more opportunity for citizens to participate in their government, I thought that it would be appropriate to splice this in and ask the city's administration, and thankfully, they conceded to allowing you to consider this. So hopefully, this is something else that you can do to further move Canton forward in this regard and continue to afford to each of your constituents an opportunity to continue to participate in their government and provide them clear guidelines that they have to follow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I'd say, you know, it makes sense. My recommendation would be that if we could just amend the ordinance, since that supersedes anything, to be ten days, and then that would put it out on Monday according to our typical schedule, and then that makes sense for, for citizens to, to react, get in front of the department heads if it's something that relates to something, ways that they were looking at.
And the only thing I would add in there is that if, if the Monday is a holiday, we would accept it on Tuesday. You know, that's a rarity, but we do have some Monday holidays, and so, you know, we would want to make sure that we word it that way, but be gracious on the, on the citizen's side, so.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think we could do that on Tuesday one day like that. That would make sense, yeah. Anyone else have thoughts on that? Comments?
I would just mention that once, since we've approved a calendar for next year, as we're working on calendars for the other groups, we'll add in there a spot on the calendar so that the public knows when they can request something and when it would be due by. Yeah.
Okay.
Do we need to formally have a, an updated...
Do you want to have an ordinance ready at the next meeting?
Right. Okay. Mr. Peppers?
I have two, uh, matters for you about developments. The first, uh, and Mr. Patton will likely have to help me on this one a little bit. You'll see two maps before you. I folded them up. This is relative to Laurel Canyon. There is, uh, an area in Laurel Canyon where there is a conflict between the properties of the golf course and the property lines as it, associated with residential pods. So if you're looking at the aerial map, this street right here, Forest View Court, is residential. It's on one side of Laurel Canyon Parkway. You've got a large, uh, wooded median, and you've got the other direction of Laurel Canyon. Just on the other side of that, you'll see an area that's bounded by a white line. That is a residential pod of Laurel Canyon. You'll note, however, that within that residential pod, there is what appears to be a parking area. That's parking associated with a golf course. You'll note that there is a retention pond, that is a pond that's associated with a golf course, and you'll note that a portion of this building, which is the maintenance shed, that's part of the golf course, also falls within that property line. The other exhibit is a little... property line. The other exhibit is a little older. It basically shows a different variation. Um, but where we're at now, we have a situation where Patrick Malloy is wanting to, uh, develop a couple of parcels of residential on that side of the parkway. And there is a question as to whether, what, as to what we're going to do with the maintenance shed that appears to encroach on private property. Um, Mr. Patton's probably more familiar with this. So if you have any questions, you know, it might be best to direct them to Mr. Patton. Um, but I did want to bring it to your attention because we've been asked to kind of figure this thing out. I know Mr. Patton's been working on this for at least ten years trying to figure it out. It never seemed like we had a, a willing partner on the private side that wanted to work with us on it. And now that I guess they're trying to wrap up development in that phase of Laurel Canyon, they're a little bit more willing to tell us what they want. So. Sound fair assessment, Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir.
Couldn't we, couldn't we, uh, maybe just do a little swap or something? Because it, it doesn't look like it's a tremendous amount of, uh, land there.
It, it actually involves a little bit more than, uh, what the aerial photography shows. Mr. Mayor?
Oh, okay.
Uh, the city in two thousand and ten did authorize and, uh, staff, uh, had West Weston Associates go out and do a survey of the encroachment area of the golf maintenance facility. And, uh, there's more encroachment into this private pod of, uh, the golf maintenance facility than what that aerial photography actually shows. I did approach, uh, the developers in two thousand and ten about a property swap, and it got kicked down the road. Then, uh, there was foreclosure. I had discussions, uh, with, uh, the bank that, uh, took it all back. FDIC closed that bank down and passed it on to another bank. I had discussions with two representatives of that bank about this issue and trying to resolve it. The last person I talked to never returned any of my phone calls. We met for lunch at the golf clubhouse to discuss the issue and look at it. Patrick Malloy is wanting to, uh, develop four residential lots within that pod. Three of them, uh, wouldn't necessarily be, if you will, be affected by the golf maintenance shed. They think that fourth lot would be affected. Uh...
Did the developer get that?
Sir?
Did, did developer get that, uh, property after the shed was built?
That was always part of, uh, the master plan, if you will. And, uh, the agreement for the golf course, as well as the development agreement, uh, relative to, uh, the City of Canton and Laurel Canyon, ha- both have language in which it, uh, states that, uh, they knew there were going to be these encroachments and that, uh, that would facilitate, uh, uh, some type of resolution property swaps. If, uh, some of the longer-serving council members, uh, will remember, it was brought to council's attention. And we did resolve some boundary swaps, uh, before the banks foreclosed, i- involving the golf course and, uh, the developer throughout all of the development. That's the time I discovered this, uh, encroachment with the golf maintenance sheds. But the developer did not want to address that at that time. Property swap, I'm not sure if, uh, there's really much left on the private sector side to swap.
Well, how, how much of an, how much acreage do you think is, is encroached upon? I mean, I mean, how much does, how much of that building, uh, area-wise is on somebody else's property?
Major portion of one of the buildings and a portion of the second. I did not bring, uh, the, uh, boundary survey that West Weston Associates...
Are we talking about more than an acre?
Uh, doubt it's, uh, nowhere near an acre. Maybe a half an acre.
So would there be, uh, if you look at that photo and just say went out to the right, you're, uh, you're still on golf cars, uh, golf course property looks like, and it looks like there's an awful lot of woods through there, if that's still there. I mean, is there not a way we could, you know, have an acre for an acre and get this resolved, you think?
When I had the initial discussion with Patrick Malloy, uh, communities, uh, in regards to some type of a property swap, there wasn't any interest on their side, uh, to facilitate that.
So, so what do they want us to do with that, that thing? Just been built on their property?
Basically, uh, uh, last offer that Patrick Malloy came is they wanted, uh, the city, the Canton Building Authority, pay them a hundred and eighty thousand bucks for that lot number four.
Well, it ain't gonna happen, is it?
How much is, how much is the shed worth? We take down the shed?
I don't know what the value of, uh, the sheds are. Um...
Right.
Well, it depends. You could do a tiny home in there, probably. Do your tiny homes up there in the shed.
I know. I'm just, you know, a hundred, I wouldn't think the shed, shed's not worth a hundred and eighty-five thousand, is it?
Probably not to us, but Mr. Miller, it might be worth it.
Well, I mean, you know, if the city owns the shed and it's on, there's somebody else's property, we gotta get it off.
Well, I think we could, uh, well, if the whole...
Not necessarily. I mean, the shed's been there a long time, which I think it's been there since the golf course was built.
So what's, what's the other alt, what's the other alternative? He didn't want to swap any property?
Adverse possession.
Well, that's the reason I asked the question about, did the developer get that, uh, acquire the property that he's going to develop, knowing or should be knowing that there was an encroachment there? Did he do it without a survey?
I don't know that for a fact, but undoubtedly, the current owner would have acquired it after the shed was built.
Right.
I think almost certainly, because the golf course was built while it was still one owner.
Correct. Uh, the golf course, uh, was one of the first things that was built along with putting some of the first streets in. They actually had, uh, water, uh, trucks out there for fire suppression. Uh, they jumped out and built all of this stuff. That's why I mentioned, uh, the language of, uh, the golf course maintenance agreement, the golf course agreement, as well as the development agreement. All three, uh, well, the development agreement between the City of Canton and, uh, Laurel Canyon Development. Uh, the other two agreements were between Canton Building Authority and, uh, Laurel Canyon Development. But all of those documents have language that envisioned that there were going to be problems and issues like this, and they'd be worked out, uh, property swaps, things of that nature.
But, but the intent...
This one has gotten to the point where I'm not sure that there's much property on the private sector side to swap, to swap and work out. And I'm not sure if there's any, uh, golf course property that, uh, Patrick Malloy might have interest in.
The, the intent was that the golf course was going to get built and have the priority.
Right.
And, and we did little swaps here and there. None of them were as significant as this one. And everybody anticipated that. Could you go build a golf course, you're not worried about exactly where the property lines are. And the developer wanted the golf course built. So this was what was supposed to happen. And so I can't remember if that was recorded or not. That, the agreements may not have been recorded on the deed records, but s- some part of it was. So, I mean, purchasers may have been on notice that this was going to happen anyway. But the building has certainly been there for more than seven years. Um, and the city or the building authority, you know, knew it could build a building wherever it needed to.
So does the guy that bought the property own that building?
What's that?
Does the guy that bought the, the, the people that bought that, uh, property in which there was a, uh, building on, do they not own that building?
No, I mean, that's what adverse possession is. We, what we, if we don't work on some out, you gotta go to court about it. So, I mean, that's, we would have to have further discussions if, I mean, we would have to go to court and say, "Don't tear our building down, because we own it. We own the land underneath the building." Um, or they go to court to be able to tear our building down. I mean, that's what you're talking about. You're not talking about anything else other than, are we gonna tear the building down or not?
Ultimately.
And, uh, just to confuse council a little bit more, this pod...
You can't do that.
Is approved for ten residential units. Patrick Malloy Communities is only proposing four. So they're automatically dropping six units. I even talked to them about the possibility of, uh, doing some, uh, townhomes there, uh, to pick up, uh, the number of units to offset, you know, what, uh, they envisioned is, uh, the cost for that lot four and that sort of thing. They didn't want to do that.
What did they want to do?
They, they want somebody to buy that, what I call lot number four.
Oh, they want us to buy it?
At, at the price that they quoted, a hundred and eighty thousand. It might be that, uh, council would like the city manager, myself, Mr. Dyer, to try to meet with, uh, Patrick Malloy Homes again and see what can be worked out, resolved.
I think, I think that's the appropriate next step, certainly. And, uh, I think whatever could be resolved, short of paying a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
It's on his property.
A lot.
I think, uh, the city attorney might be in a better position to let them know that, uh, you know, that probably ain't gonna happen. And as he talked about, uh, uh, adverse situation there, because those buildings, uh, had definitely have been there for over eleven years.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
Another thing, Mr. Mayor, council members, Patrick Malloy was a minority, uh, partner in the original development out there. He was a minority member of Laurel Canyon Development.
When they developed the golf course?
When the thing, uh, was originally started before the first tree was taken down.
With Levitt? He was a partner with Levitt in some?
Well, uh, Stephen McCauley, uh, was, uh, if you will, the, uh, front person, as I would call it, for Laurel Canyon Development. Uh, there were quite a few partners, but I've seen, uh, Patrick Malloy's name in some of the documents associated with the Laurel Canyon Development Company as a minority, uh, partner from, uh, the very beginning.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you.
So Mr. So Mr. Dyer is gonna work with, with Mr. Malloy?
Well, we'll, we'll come up with something.
Okay.
I present choices for you.
Okay.
The other thing I have for you is a memorandum. This is about Great Sky Parkway. Uh, Ms. Wilson had asked for information on that. Um, in short, uh, we were asked to look at that section of Great Sky Parkway from Stargaze Ridge to Greenbrow Way. Uh, we noted there's not a top coat on that section of the roadway. The city did accept that portion of roadway during a meeting on December the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, along with several other great size, great sky streets. I've included a copy of the minutes and list of those streets for you. Um, we began looking into this matter. Mr. Patton was able to find a letter from the former city buil- building official Gary Mullenix in, uh, two, from two thousand and four, where, and it's included for you, where he inspected the construction of the roads, sewers, and water services in Pod Five and Parkway Two, which we consider to be that section. And it says that in the letter that he found the work acceptable and in conformance with the development and construction regulations. It goes on in the letter to say that it's okay to release the maintenance bonds, not performance bonds, but maintenance bonds, uh, associated with the project. The only maintenance bonds we could find associated with that project were Pod Five. So those are the streets in Pod Five. There was not a maintenance bond that was included on Great Sky Parkway. Um, additionally, at that time, the city did not require a cut sheet, uh, in the plans as it relates to striping or signs. So there's a little history for you. Uh, conditions, the roadway's currently not top coated. There are no crosswalks. There's no striping. There are no stop bars. Um, staff went out and noted that the base is actually in pretty good condition in that area. Um, if you recall, a few years ago, we had IMS come in and do pavement management assessment of the area. Um, that area was not coded with a date for year of completion because it didn't have top coat on it. They were only looking at those areas with top coats. Um, the remaining portion of Great Sky Parkway is slated for paving and a retopping in year four of that program that IMS set up for us. We're currently in year two, so that means that paving would take place, if you funded it every year, that paving would take place in two thousand and twenty. Um, so one suggestion would be that you could pave it all at the same time. Uh, while we're working on our year-two paving, we asked the contractor to give us a quote on top coating that section as an option. We received that quote back at a hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight, eighty, and thirteen cents. Uh, we did receive a price back for striping only. It's roughly a dollar fifty a foot. Uh, it costs us about five thousand dollars to do striping in that portion of roadway, crossbars, what have you. Uh, signs or so, if we added additional signs in that area, would probably cost us around two thousand dollars. The residential concerns seem to be speed in the area. Um, they seem to be, uh, an understanding that there's deer that cross in that particular area. There's deer that cross all over that, that particular development. Um, and, and keeping people on their side of the road. You could certainly do that with striping, you know. The deer, however, are not going to watch for the signs. We just need the people to know that there's deer in the area. On the safety side, I asked Chief Mitchell, uh, to have our, uh, crime analyst go back and pull data on accidents related to, uh, Great Sky Parkway. We had, um, a total of seven accidents in the last four years on Great Sky Parkway. Only one of those accidents took place actually in that section of Great Sky Parkway. That was not related to a deer. I've kind of thrown the deer accidents out. That's kind of a anomaly there. Uh, so we had one accident. We also put our speed detection sign out there and ran speed, uh, checks between November twenty-sixth and December fourth. Um, that road is listed at thirty-five miles an hour. The eighty-fifth percentile of the speed going through that road was thirty-five miles per hour. Um, we had the ability to deviate from that thirty-five miles per hour, either five miles per hour up or five miles per hour down. So just so you know that information. I have given you what I consider to be some options for you to consider. First option is that if sightline and speed and safety of drivers is really an issue, we may want to look at some consideration at breaking that roadway up a little bit with some stop areas. If you're coming in Great Sky Parkway, for instance, uh, from forty side, there is one intersection that does have, uh, a two-way stop on it, uh, to slow down traffic as it comes down a hill. Um, I don't necessarily know that the residents are going to be thrilled if we go, uh, placing stop signs at, at intersections out there to break it up and make it easier to pull out, but that's certainly something you could consider. Uh, we could choose to only stripe that area right now, uh, and then top coat in two thousand and twenty with the rest of Great Sky Parkway. Uh, if you went with that option, uh, it would probably cost us seventy-five hundred dollars, less than ten thousand dollars to stripe and, and add signs in that area. Um, you could choose to top coat and stripe the entire area. Remember, the cost is about one sixty-eight. Uh, we do have about twenty-nine thousand dollars in add-on fees that have been collected out there for new construction on that area. It could be used for either one of those options. And the fourth option is we could just add signage at this time and delay the striping, top coating. Um, it's up to your pleasure.
I have, I have a recommendation that I'd like to give the council to consider. I, I recommend that we spend five thousand dollars for striping that area. Don't worry about the top coat right now because they're building out. And, and we don't want to put a top coat on it. It wears down. But the striping costs about five thousand dollars. To put the striping in now, which will help keep people on their side of the road on those curvy roads, and to put up the additional signage, uh, that's about two thousand dollars. And also, we can lower the speed limit to thirty instead of thirty-five. And I recommend we do those three things now.
I agree with you. Anyone else?
It's a seven thousand dollar expense, and hopefully it will save some lives.
Ms. McGrath? Uh, you don't have to, don't, don't turn it on or off, because I've been leaving them on. And when you touch it, it goes off.
Right.
Yeah, I missed you left them all on.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
I didn't know that, thank you.
I know, I'm sorry, I should have told you that.
Mr. Peppers, I, I agree with Ms. Wilson. Something needs to be done. Residents are very, very concerned about the safety of drivers and of their children on the roads. And I would like to also explore the stop signs, because that would definitely slow the traffic down and encourage people to obey the speed limit and know that these stop signs are in place. And I think that would do a great deal to slow down the traffic. And I'm sure everyone cares about their children and would want to do anything they can to not kill anybody.
Well, as I said, I, I'm not promoting stop signs to slow the speed down. But if the issue is pulling out of a pod in sight distances, then that, that might be a good application for a stop sign. And of course, we would sit down with our staff and evaluate that and see what we could come up with.
Please explore that.
If there are, if there are sight distance problems or something pulling out, then I, I understand you probably wouldn't need stop signs. But most transportation agencies will tell you that you should not use stop signs to control speed. You really shouldn't.
Sorry, I'm wrong then?
It'll, it'll do it. I mean, it'll do it. But I'll tell you, sometimes when you, when you do, and I, and I have done this in the past, and, I mean, you know, rumble strips have too, but you don't want to put them in a neighborhood, you know? Rumble strips come into a, to a stop sign. I mean, you'll really get some flack when that happens. But a lot of, a lot of them going through, particularly on a parkway, they don't want to stop at every intersection that comes up. It'll slow them down. But I think you end up with more kickback on that than you would not to have those. But another thing, based on what you were just saying about the forty, whatever, eighty-five percentile, I'm assuming that the average speed through there was about forty-four miles an hour. Is that, eighty-five percent of that is be? If thirty-five is the eighty-fifth percentile of whatever speed they were running, does that mean they were averaging about forty-four?
No, that means fifteen percent of the vehicles were above thirty-five miles an hour.
So we don't know what the average speed was through there?
Correct. What you have with you does have some of the high speeds and the low speeds for that particular time, you know? And, and that's, that's the thing I was trying to stress in an email back to a resident this week. Of the accidents that we've had out there, the majority of those accidents have been on the other end of Great Sky Parkway, which is already top coated, it's signed, it's got stripes. If people won't slow down, the stripes and the signs may not help them, you know? It's a behavioral.
But it might, but it may.
It could, it could, but a lot of it is a behavioral issue.
I think it is, and, and maybe this will call more attention to it. And I think an investment of seven thousand dollars is not, is not extraordinary.
Absolutely.
Just reading the data, the average is twenty-eight miles an hour. That's right?
Yes, but we can't go by the average. We have to go by the eighty-five.
I know, I know, I'm just saying.
I'm surprised it's that low, to be honest with you. Twenty-eight miles an hour?
You ain't gonna be on your side of the road.
Boy, they don't go through our subdivision that way. I don't even go that slow.
You got people going three miles an hour. Gotta bring your average down.
At one in the morning.
You have, you have to be slower to text these days. Kidding. The only other thing that I had for you tonight is to let you know about our project, again, at one fifty-one Elizabeth Street. You know, we talked about the fence earlier tonight. We've got our estimates in on all the work over there to get the police department moved in. We've already started with some of the demolition in there, and so that project's moving along quickly. Hopefully, we'll be in by the end of January. That's kind of our target. But it looks like the total cost of all of those projects is gonna be about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to get us in there. So if you, if you think about it, we were thinking if we were gonna build a new PD structure next to that city hall, we were looking at about ten thousand square feet and spending between two and a half and three million dollars on that. They're gonna end up with twenty thousand square feet. We ended up with thirty thousand square feet. We're gonna be about, for all of it combined. So it really is a, it really is a good deal for the taxpayers and, and gives us some space to grow into and, and we've done it pretty quickly, so that's good, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
The only thing that I have has to do with the, it's that time of year again when we make nominations for various committees and boards and authorities for those who may have resigned or moved away or just, you know, or, or didn't show up to the committees that they were supposed to show to. And the absentee rate was way, way high. But there's, there's, it's my intention where, where possible, certainly, to, to renominate those who are willing to, to serve. And we couldn't really make it, I don't think, as a city without the work a lot of the committees and boards and authorities do. So we certainly appreciate that. But some of the, some of the ones where there are openings or, or needing appointments here, and my recommendations would be, on the Canton Development Authority, there's one reappointment that I would recommend, and, and I'll make these nominations and, and you can think about it. And there's a couple of places or more here that I certainly, any of them, really, I would entertain any recommendations that you have and, and consider those among all that we've already received. Under the Board of Zoning Appeals, there'd be one, one appointment to complete the term of Harry Johnston, which that one will end twelve thirty-one twenty. And I, I would nominate David Johnson for that, who is, has agreed to do it if, if the board sees fit to approve his nomination. The Impact Fee Advisory Committee, those are annual appointments, but I'm not gonna make any recommendations on that, other than the fact that I, we, it's my understanding we really don't need that committee any longer.
What committee is?
Impact Fee Advisory Committee. I don't, when's the last time they met? Ian, a while?
Two thousand nine.
Okay. We don't, we don't need that. I mean, if, if we, if we find suddenly that we need one of these committees that hasn't met in many, many years, then we'll reconstitute that committee. Historic Preservation Commission, there's one full-term appointment to replace Harry Johnston, and I will nominate Ms. Wilson, actually recommend this individual, Dr. Mark Roberts, who is Provost at, at Reinhardt University. And he's expressed an interest in serving in that area. The Canton Tree Commission, one appointment, one reappointment and one replacement. Reappoint Regane Cordery, who has asked to be reappointed. And, and then we need one other appointment, or if you have a recommendation between now and, and two weeks from now, let me know. To fill the unexpired term of Mary Chapman, her term ends twelve thirty-one twenty. She was unable to attend principally because of the timing of the, of the meetings. I think they were in the afternoon and she was teaching or something and, and just simply couldn't, couldn't make them. On tourism, there are two appointments, there are annual appointments. Joyce Swindell and Frances Vaughn resigned from that. I would nominate someone who had requested being there is Sherry Cloud. She has been on Main Street Board, I think, in the past. And Canton Preservation, Inc., that's another board that I have no idea when they met last, and so I'm not gonna make any appointments or reappointments to that. And hopefully, if that occasion should arise that we need that, then it can be reestablished. Canton Main Street, three reappointments to that would be Ray DeLuca, Corey Wilson, and Jeff Brown would be my recommendation. Also, unfortunately, Mickey had stepped down off of that, and it was recommended that Sharon Ware serve in that capacity for the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty. Also, I believe, you know, was recommended Pat Gold to, to replace Megan Quinlan on the, on their board, once, since Pat is, is leaving our employment at the city here, she will be, she still wants to be involved, she says, so. And, and Stormwater Advisory Board, these are annual appointments, and I would entertain a recommendation on those. Particularly, we have one that we would probably need to replace would be Barbara Holloway. And that's the only one that, that I think, and that's basically because I think the, the attendance has not been where it ought to have been for some reason or another. But all the others are annual appointments, and I would recommend that they be reappointed. Pretty good job there. Right now, I think that's, that's all of those, so, that, that are up. If you come up with names or anything, feel free to, to send them. There's, we'll certainly consider them, but try to do it in the next week or so and, and give them time to. If I don't know somebody, I, I like to meet them before we nominate them day through at some point, you know? Okay. That's all that I have, so I will enter. We do not have an executive session tonight, so we're getting out here actually a little bit early, it seems like, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ms. Wilson made the motion. Mr. Goode and Saget, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Return. Thank you.